Good evening. I've called to order this meeting tonight of the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission for May the 25th, 2023. We'll start off with our roll call agenda. Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Harrison.
Present.
Commissioner Lindsey is present. Commissioner Orr.
Present.
Alderman Peterson.
Here.
And Commissioner Williamson.
Present.
We've got three members that are out. Commissioner Franks, Commissioner Mann, and Commissioner McLemore, but we do have a quorum, so we will proceed on. Accommodations have been made to ensure that the public is able to participate in this meeting. The public may participate in the following ways. You can watch the meeting on Franklin TV or the City of Franklin website. You can watch the live stream through the City of Franklin Facebook and YouTube accounts. You can email comments to planningintake@franklantn.gov to be provided in full to the commission and included in the minutes but not read aloud in their entirety during the meeting. Email comments are accepted until 12 noon on the day before the meeting. You can comment in person here in the boardroom tonight. Speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card prior to the meeting starting, and I have a number of speaker cards tonight. Speakers may sit in the boardroom or you can wait in the lobby. So the first item on our agenda is a consideration of approval for the April 27th, 2023 Planning Commission minutes. Is there a motion on those minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harrison and a second by Alderman Peterson. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all by roll call again. Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
Alderman Peterson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson.
Aye.
The motion passes. Citizen comments on items not on the agenda. This is a time in our meeting where we have a time for, it's open for Franklin citizens to be heard on items that are not included on this agenda. As provided by law, the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission shall make no decisions or consideration of actions of citizen comments except to refer the matter to the Planning Director for administrative consideration or to schedule the matter for Planning Commission consideration at a later date. So if anyone has comments they'd like to make tonight for items that are not on our agenda tonight, you can come forward to the lectern now. Seeing none. Any comments that, okay. Announcements?
I just have a couple of reminders of some upcoming meeting dates. On June 12th, we'll be holding a special Planning Commission and Board of Mayor and Alderman joint conceptual workshop. That'll be here in City Hall in the training room from 11:30 to 4:00, and we'll be discussing the Envision Franklin updates and some specific topics that you've, that are on the agenda that's been published in the paper and that we reviewed tonight during the joint workshop. Then again, on June 26th, we'll be having a special community meeting to discuss the Factory District, and that'll be at Liberty Hall in the Factory from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And we'll be reviewing the draft recommendations for the Factory District at that community meeting. So just mark your calendar for those dates, and those are all the announcements I have.
Great. Thank you, Emily. Next is a vote to place non-agenda items on the agenda. This is a special non-agenda process, which is by design is reserved for emergency instances. Non-agenda items are considered only upon unanimous approval of all the Franklin Planning Commission members. So does anyone have a non-agenda item to place on our agenda for tonight? Oh, we're venue? Nope. Okay. Okay, item number two is the consideration of approval of our consent agenda. These are items three through eight and items 13 through 17 on the consent agenda. And these are items that are deemed by the Planning Commission to be non-controversial and routine and are approved in one motion without discussion. So those are the items on consent. Does anyone wish to pull an item off?
Who came here?
Came here.
We haven't heard anything.
Okay, so this is an item, this is the item for approval of the consent agenda, items three through eight and items 13 through 17. Does anyone wish to pull an item off of consent tonight? Hearing none. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Allen and a second by Commissioner Orr. By roll call vote, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
Alderman Peterson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson.
Aye.
The motion passes on the approval of the consent agenda. Items nine and 10 are next, and these are items that will be considered together, separately but together. They're on the same project. So item number nine, consideration of ordinance 2023-22, an ordinance to rezone 2.906 acres from Regional Commerce 6, RC 6, District to Planned PD 61.3, 3,362, District for the property located east of Mack Hatcher Memorial Parkway and north of Cool Springs Boulevard, the project referred to as the 101 Cool Springs Boulevard PUD subdivision. Staff presentation?
Thank you. It's staff's understanding that the applicant is requesting deferral of both the consideration of the rezoning and the development plan. Staff is in support of the deferral, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Okay. So the applicant is requesting deferral, deferral to the June meeting, to the June meeting. Good, okay. So the request is to defer this item to the June 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone, because this item has been public notice, we will accept public comment on this item. So does anyone wish to speak to this item tonight? Seeing none. Is there anything, the applicant, would you like to present anything tonight?
Hi, Jeff Rosiak from Gamble Design Collaborative. As Chelsea mentioned, we're requesting deferral, and I'm here to, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Is there a motion on this item?
Move to defer to the June Planning Commission meeting.
We have a motion to defer by Commissioner Orr and a second by Commissioner Harrison. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none by roll call, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
Alderman Peterson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williamson.
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is for the same project, consideration of Resolution 2023-42, a resolution approving a development plan for 101 Cool Springs Boulevard PUD subdivision for the property located east of Mack Hatcher Memorial Parkway and north of Cool Springs Boulevard. Is there a motion on this item?
Move for deferral to the June meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Allen to move the deferral to the June meeting and a second by Commissioner Orr. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
Alderman Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson.
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Item number 11, consideration of ordinance 2023-15, an ordinance to rezone 7.2 acres from Residential 4, R4, to Planned PD 38.19, 3,000, District for the property located east of Franklin Road and south of Liberty Pike, located at 209 Old Liberty Pike, otherwise referred to as the Middle Lake PUD subdivision. Turn it over for staff presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is requesting to rezone from R4 to Plan District to accommodate the proposed Middle Lake PUD subdivision. The development has 275 residential units and 3,000 square feet of commercial space. Envision Franklin places this property in the multifamily design concept. Primary uses include multifamily with single-family and attached residential units as secondary uses. The design team brought forth an Envision Franklin Plan Amendment to the Planning Commission on March 23rd, 2023, in which they proposed a special consideration language specific to this site that allowed for the consideration of additional height when underground parking is provided, as well as a small amount of commercial space when it is a use that supports the surrounding community. Planning Commission approved this requested amendment to Envision Franklin. The Plan District, the Plan Zoning District with proposed uses meets the recommendations of Envision Franklin. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to approve ordinance 2023-15. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So it's time in our meeting for public comment. So I've got a stack of speaker cards that have been presented. So this is what, this is the way, the protocol for public comment. So we'll ask you to come to the lectern, and when you get to the lectern, please line up two or three, two or three, I'll call out some of your names, so that we've got people waiting, and then give us your name and your address, and then we ask you to hold your comments to two minutes. And if, at the end of the two minutes, then Amy will be timing, and you'll hear that tone, and so that means, that means it's time to wrap up your comments. So with that, I've got Miles Johnson, Donna Dos, Mike Reinfeldt, Thomas Bell. If you'll come up and kind of get in line behind each other.
I didn't expect to be called first, but I'll do it. First of all, I'm Miles Johnson. I have two properties within this area. We live at 107 Harlinsdale Court on the north side of Harlinsdale Farm, so we're still under the historic overlay. We also have a house on Old Liberty Pike at 207 Old Liberty Pike, so our, our house there abuts this property. I'll say this, when I originally heard about the project, I was skeptical. Like many of us, I, you know, I was questioning how close it's going to be to my house, how tall it's going to be, how many people are going to be there. And I just, not knowing caused the skepticism. Then I saw the plan, and I was pretty enamored with it, and I thought, I'd want to live there if I had the opportunity. I think it's a great plan. I met with Truland. I had a couple of concerns as it related to my property on Old Liberty Pike. I met with the developers. I found them to be open and honest and willing to listen to my concerns, and in fact, at the end of the meeting, they had won me over. They were very agreeable to the issues that I'd raised, and I felt that after leaving the meeting, I was in full support. I think Franklin is a growth town. I don't think it's an anti-growth town. I think the growth train for Franklin left about 20 years ago, and I think we're on board with that, and I personally am in favor of it. I think it works within the framework of Envision Franklin. I think it's, because of its density, I think some people tend to think that that's more traffic. I happen to take an opposing view. I think that sometimes when you, when you put density in place, you leave your cars in place. You ride your bike. You walk. I can hear the rumbling, but I think that sometimes density is a good thing. I think it will attract talent. I think it fits within the Factory District proposal that's out there, and I think it fits in perfectly with that. I think it's a lifestyle choice. I think it will be less traffic, not more. I think it will encourage further development. I think it will enhance what, what the Factory District and what in Franklin, what in Envision Franklin has in mind. I know from running businesses here, and I've been in front of this.
Hi.
Excuse me?
I'll make that call, please.
Am I up already?
Goes fast, doesn't it? It does, it does.
You know, I, you know, I think that if you enjoy the new sidewalks, the parks, this is something that's going to help fund all of that. I think it's a lifestyle choice for all of us. I think the construction, I don't look for.
Everybody's going to want, everybody's going to want an extra minute, so if you'll, please wrap.
I'm willing to give it to everybody else.
No, I'm not.
I think it's.
We have a lot of people that want to.
No, I'm saying I'm willing to give it up, and I'll turn it over. I'm for it, and I hope it gets passed.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I've timed mine. I'm at one minute.
Okay.
So my name is Donna Dos. I live at 324 Liberty Pike in Jamison Station condos. I'm opposed to the Middle Lake project. There are many reasons I do not like this current proposal, but I thought I would just choose one because of the sake of time, right? But I love this city. It is the most beautiful, peaceful, quaint little town I've ever seen, and we are all fortunate to call this home. I feel we have one time, we have one time to get this right. If a project of this magnitude gets approved, it will be the beginning of the end to this beautiful, peaceful, quaint and little town that we all love. Soon developers from all over.
Please, people, this, that is not part of the protocol here. Let the speaker make her comments.
Soon, okay, can I go? Soon developers from all over the country will want to develop small office buildings posing as apartments to profit off people that can only afford to live in a tiny 600 square foot studio. If this gets approved, it will open the floodgates for all others to follow. And in a few short years, this small, beautiful, quaint town will be unrecognizable. So I beg you, please don't let them do the Star Town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Mike Reinfeldt. I spoke at the March meeting and the April meeting, both times. I live at 119 Jamison Station Lane. I'm currently the president of the Jamison Station Townhomes HOA, and I spoke at the March meeting and the April meeting in opposition to the Middle Lake project. And I'm still against the Middle Lake project. I mean, for all the obvious reasons. It's too high, it's too dense, the parking shortages, traffic issues, overcrowded, flooding. Those issues are all real. But today, I just want to mention two other quick things. And the first thing I want to mention is the brand. You all are so lucky. The Franklin, the City of Franklin has one of the best brands in the world, and that brand is charm, it's grace, it's historical, and it's understated. And I'm sorry, the Middle Lake project is none of those things. So don't mess with the brand you have. You have one of the best brands in the country, and you're going to give it away with a Middle Lake-type project. The other thing I want to mention to you is to be aware of unintended consequences, unexpected consequences. And let me give you an example of what I'm talking about. I live in the townhomes, and I've had two of the people in the townhomes come to me already and say, if that project goes in, we're going to become a gated community. There's too much traffic. You know, we're going to have to put up gates to stop the people from going through, the cars from going through, and that's going to change the whole culture of the Factory District. So just be careful. We've got a chance to get it right, and I don't think the Middle Lake's the right, the right thing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Bell, 177 Lancaster Drive. I've been here multiple times on date nights with my wife, it seems, always. I don't think anyone can argue how great a presentation they put on, how beautiful it is. I don't think anyone can deny they would like to live there. My contention is just not that height and not that density in that location. Again, and it flies in the face of the historic zoning. It's in a historic overlay, and yet it says two or three stories. This is five and six stories. And I realize it's five stories on one side, but it's six stories on the other. And the zoning calls for two to three in a historic overlay, yet that's overlooked. And the Envision Franklin document also says two to three. The survey that you just spoke about this afternoon talked about how the character, how the historic is tops on the list of all of the survey, and that's the last Envision Franklin, and it's the new one, and it's the survey that was just spoke about this afternoon amongst yourselves in the working group. So I say to you, it's not just the people here who are going to have to live with a six-story building in their backyard, and it's about all of the people who took the survey in Franklin and said they like three-story buildings and don't give up the character of Franklin and two to three in historic zoning. And somehow, five and six stories has been approved, conditionally approved, in a historic overlay. It doesn't make any sense. And to just jam it down our throat saying it's a neighborhood, it's the entire community taking those surveys that are providing you with the data to say what they want. So I would implore you to look at that and scale it back and reduce the height and the density, and we can all get along just well at three stories. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Tom Williams, John Rossello, Elizabeth Crockett, Greg Morrison, Jennifer Morrison. Yes, sir.
I've not been here before. Tom Williams, I live at 213 Old Liberty Pike. I am opposed to the project as it stands. Think there's the height and things, but that's what I want to talk about is actually traffic. I live on Old Liberty Pike. If you look at the plans for this, if you want to go south on Franklin Road, how do you get there from this location? You can't go east because you won't be able to turn left to get on Liberty Pike. So you come down, you go to Daniels, you look to your left, and I got a stoplight. Okay, go there. I have to wait, turn left, go down Franklin Road, go to a stoplight there, I wait, turn left, go down the road, there's Old Liberty Pike, stoplight, I wait. Or I look to the right on Daniels, there's a stop sign, I can shoot straight down the road and skip two stoplights. The only trouble is, Old Liberty Pike is 10-foot wide. We have no sidewalks. People walk all the time. People park on the road, which basically cuts it down to a one-lane highway or one-lane street. So I'd ask you to think about it. If you were up in there, which way would you go? I'd go down Old Liberty Pike. So I ask you to think about that, the traffic problem that created there, and I thank you.
John Rossello. I live on Adair Court. We moved here less than a year ago, and I spent over a year figuring where we were going to move to from an area that was, started out as farms and ranches, that now is seven lanes northbound, seven lanes southbound of freeways, dense population to the point it was not enjoyable to take a trip anywhere anymore because you were stuck in traffic. I spent hundreds of hours looking on the computer through YouTube videos, through Google Maps, driving through streets, and settled on Franklin because, as words were spoken, character, charm, I called it Mayberry. And I brought my mother here for the reason, and I chose a house that was built 30 years ago, just close to the East Flank Battlefield, for the reason that we didn't have to live in a dense, populated, or congested area. Anytime, and I've seen it, anytime you begin bringing in massive development, you lose quality of life. And that is something that distressed me, and I got involved in this when I heard about this. Please consider this, and I am not in favor of the Middle Lake project.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Crockett, and I live at 166 Franklin Road, which is in the historic overlay. I am opposed to this project for many reasons, but first, I would like to ask you all to come to our neighborhood and see our neighborhood. It's walkable, it's friendly, it's beautiful. Come see it. And when you come, we're going to show you what the Middle Lake is going to do to our neighborhood, okay? First, the project is going to be on seven acres. Then they're going to cut a road through these seven acres, so now we're down to about six acres. The owners want a 75-foot barrier around their house so they won't have the noise and pollution and worry with the traffic. They're going to give us a little bit of green space, so now we're down to about five acres. On these five acres, they're putting up two huge apartment buildings, which as of the Monday night Zoom meeting have grown now to seven stories. Don't ask me how they've grown that high in a few days, but that's what we hear. So all we're going to see from Old Liberty and Daniels are the back of these huge glass brick apartment buildings. And all of this is in the historic overlay, I might add. This is much, too much density for these few acres. Plus everything, all the apartments, townhouses, duplex, everything is rental, no homeowners. Again, I'm asking you to come and please see our neighborhood and what this development is going to do to us. Before you vote, please know if this is approved, it's going to change our neighborhood drastically. It will never be the same if you approve this project. If the density is decreased to be compatible with the three stories of Jamison Station with parking in the back, this, this, this could be acceptable. Again, please come see our neighborhood, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Craig Morrison at Jamison Station. I'm reading on behalf of Chris and Emily Jenkins, neighbors at 215 Franklin Road. We want to express our support for the Middle Lake project as one of the closest neighbors to the project. When we moved downtown, we wanted to be part of a vibrant community with shops, restaurants, and businesses, all within an accessible walking area. With the growth Franklin has experienced in the last few years, we have seen all the demand for downtown living, its greatly exceeded supply, particularly in the attainably priced market. For this reason, we think we must be open to opportunities to provide more housing within the city core. Looking at the Reborn, Commercial Hub at the Factory, Jamison Station, and the Everly Complex, the proposal for the Middle Lake is situationally appropriate. With much of the property remaining as green space open to the public, we believe it is a good balance of providing maximum best use of the property as well as blending in with the more dense development in that section already of Liberty Pike. We understand the concerns of immediate neighbors regarding growth. However, we don't think it would be appropriate to limit landowners' use of their property simply because surrounding property owners prefer it to remain underdeveloped. If we had historically limited growth in that way, our home and all of Lancaster would still be part of the grounds of Jasmine Grove. We have recently been through a renovation of our home in the historic overlay, and we have full trust that the city codes inspectors and historic zoning will hold the developers to their promises to address stormwater and blasting concerns. In our experience, city employees are diligent when you are the one trying to complete a project, but that diligence pays off with a. a project, but that diligence pays off with a finished project that will conform to the expectations that were set out when it was permitted. Change is hard, and we understand that on this side of downtown, it is an exciting period of transformation, and therefore we urge you to approve this project. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jen Morrison. I'm the other half of Craig. We live at Jamison Station, quite literally at the corner of Liberty Pike and Daniels. Lots has been said in this debate, a lot of it fear-based, and I think that the city planners and the Middle Eight have done a good job of putting out facts. But even so, you know, fear, even when it's disproven by fact, it's still easier to give into than a vision that none of us have seen before. A vision that I think is trying to create something bigger than the sum of its parts, bigger than what we know, something that will bring richness to our community, rather than just making sure we maintain the status quo. The vision of True Land for the Middle Eight, of Holiday Properties for the Factory, of our aldermen who proposed the factory district, it's all so aligned, and it's such a tremendous opportunity for us as a community. I think it will be accretive to other areas in downtown Franklin, and the vision for this community requires the type of housing that the Middle Eight is proposing, housing that's accessible to a broad spectrum of ages, careers, economic means. It requires exactly what they're proposing. So if our community and the whole of downtown Franklin just looks like me, then it's kind of boring. We want the diversity that diverse housing can bring. No change is easy, certainly nothing great has ever come without a little debate and some costs, so I'm grateful that you all consider all voices, not just the loudest, and that you weigh every decision, not just this one, with the courage to challenge the way that it is, and you're willing to envision something that's inclusive and would be something beyond the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Heather Black, Paul Lebavitz, Peggy Driscoll, Tiffany White, Kelsey Sasser.
Hi, my name's Heather Black. I live at 61 Anson Park, which is part of Fieldstone Farms. This is actually my first meeting ever. I'm one of the typical transplants that moved here five years ago from the city of Chicago. I have to say, Envision Franklin was probably one of the great reasons why I stayed here. Franklin is a great city. I think this development is getting away from that. I mean, I hear everyone talk about they want to be able to walk and things like that. You can walk, but I also think a five-story building in downtown Franklin takes away from the historic aspect of the city, and you're losing that. You're losing the charm that brings people here. Quite frankly, if you want to walk in a city, you can move too. I moved here. I love it here. I think this is a great city. And with part of the development, my concern is, I'm in Fieldstone Farms, the flood plan, you know, everyone talks about the flood plan in the immediate area. In 2021, downtown flooded. With this development, how does that affect everyone downriver from where this development is? I mean, I think it was 2010 was the worst flood in Tennessee in the past 100 years, and that flooded most of Franklin. How is this going to affect that? I haven't seen anything in relation to downstream, just the immediate area. There's no discussion of how it's going to affect other neighborhoods besides just this area. Also, I just think there's not, you know, everyone's talking about, we need to grow, we need to do this. There's a strategic way to keep that historic charm. Before I moved here from Chicago, I lived in Connecticut. I grew up there. A lot of those cities still have their historic districts from the 1700s. Why can't Franklin keep that same aspect? That's really, those are my concerns with this. Where's the actual historic value to adding a five- or six-story building to the historic district? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Paul Lebavitz. I live at 102 Winslow Road. I've been there for 40 years. I've seen the viewshed of Liberty Pike actually improve over time. The viewshed has not been static. When I moved in, the factory was still making mattresses and sofas, and I saw it close, and then I saw the parking lot filled with yellow school buses, and then I watched the marvelous rebuild that the Layhues did to the land and the building, and that's when Liberty Pike was created. I have the corner house, so every day when I get up and go get the newspaper, I'm looking down Liberty Pike, and that's my viewshed. Right now, I can hardly keep away from Five Daughters, Donuts, and Jenny's Ice Cream, but I'm here tonight to tell you that really, the zoning manual is full of guidelines that may be frustrating, but the regulations have preserved the viewshed around the factory to a large degree. Speaking for the residents who live within 1,000 feet of the building, we like the profile we see now. The water tank's a local landmark since built. It stands out well next to the massive factory building. It's tall and slender, and we can see around it, and we can see down Liberty Pike. And after 70 years, it's still a major landmark. One of the latest additions to the factory area is Jamison Station, which with its three stories and penthouse, it's a great fit. We like the way it looks. The majority of those living in 1,000-foot radius enjoy the present profiles of the nearby factory buildings. We don't want to see a building taller than Jamison Station, especially a six-story building with a penthouse. As community leaders, I'm asking, please do not allow a six-story building to proceed further and ruin the great factory viewshed that we all enjoy. And we do have regulations in place to protect that viewshed. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Peggy Driscoll. I live at 162 Franklin Road, but I am actually reading this representing Jessica Sowell, who lives on Old Liberty, and the other neighbors who were born and raised here in Franklin, people who have worked their whole lives to buy a house in our historic downtown, ours. Development is inevitable. We are not opposing growth. Franklin invites it because of who we are historically and what we have preserved. We have a job, people who are alerted, informed, and elected, to preserve and steward a historic town like Franklin and develop for the community we have. We don't make exceptions, but we are the exception. We attract, we don't need to promote, we are families, safe, walkability, longtime community, parks. We are what people want, so we ask, what would enhance that and what would change us completely? Tourists, congestion, urban city, six, now I'm hearing seven, story buildings, all rentals not invested in the community? Is this on-brand? Is this what brand is? Can we do better? Are we so excited for an opportunity that we are missing, the real opportunity to do the right thing? Is more really better? Is Jamison and E-Spaces inviting? Do you see people strolling by the parking garage and mail centers, crossing the busy four-to-five streets with their dogs and kids? We have great intentions, but what is the true impact? Is there a chance we would regret these exceptions we are making? Lastly, Old Liberty needs sidewalks, at least on one side. We can't move forward with anything while people speed down this cut-through street. The plans need to include sidewalks. We are here to get it right. We should welcome helpful feedback and get curious about the impact. I also have a statement that I would like to read on behalf of myself, even though I've been up here, because I was reading this on behalf of my neighbor. Is that possible?
Can you do that in 30 seconds?
I'll try, and you can stop me, and I'll walk away.
Okay.
We are not for this project. We live at 162 Franklin Road. Where do you live? It's not in your front yard, side yard, or backyard, is it? Your property value isn't at risk. Sure, I'd be for it on Fair Street or HG Hills Complex, but you are congesting up my side of town with potential flooding risking mine and my neighbors' property value. But does that matter to any of you? We've had multiple projects at our house. We've gone in front of the historic community, the commission, multiple times for the improvements to better our property, yet the monstrosity of our project passes in a few meetings? Do you all even care? I'm going to leave you with that question. How would you feel if it was in your backyard, front yard, or side yard?
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tiffany White at 20 Daniels Drive. This project site is almost directly across from my home. It basically is my front yard. I have been a Realtor in Franklin for 18 years, and I have a background in civil engineering. My neighbors and I are adamantly opposed to the size, density, and scope of the Middle Eight development. I'm very concerned about traffic, about flooding, about the density, the building height, but I'm primarily here to speak about parking concerns. The only parking reserved for my house is a garage off the alley. We do not have a driveway, and we cannot use the garage at Jamison Station. We do have limited parallel spaces on the street. I've looked over the parking study for the project, and the study disregards the City of Franklin Parking Ordinance and cites national parking statistics. The resulting parking demand projected in the study is 22% lower than the city's requirements. This creates a lowest-use scenario that is not likely to be reality. We already have parking issues on my street, especially on Saturday mornings and on Old Liberty Pike on Sundays. If there's not enough parking for the factory, and this new development does not build enough parking either, my neighbors and I will have no parking except for our respective two-car garages. I've been unable to get answers to several questions. I've asked if Daniels Drive in front of my house will be widened as part of this project, and I've not received an answer. I've also asked if street parking will continue to be allowed on Daniels Drive in front of our homes between 20 and 26 Daniels Drive. When cars are parked in front right now, it blocks one lane of travel. Any widening to this road for traffic or parking would take away our street trees and cause the road to be that much closer to our homes. During a recent Zoom meeting with the design team, their answers to many of our questions were that the city has approved this aspect of the project already or preliminarily approved it already. Why does it seem that typical city procedures have not been followed and this project was fast-tracked? Why were immediate neighbors to the development the last to know about it? Why were signs about the rezoning request and the new planned unit development, this meeting not presented until last week? After so many aspects of the development have already been preliminarily approved? Additionally, there's three graduations this evening, this very important meeting, this very important vote, and there's three high school graduations scheduled at the same time. We do not want this monstrous development in our neighborhood. It is going to change our neighborhood forever. Please vote against it.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes. Kelsey?
Yeah, I'm Kelsey Sasser. I live at 159 First Avenue North, the Harpeth Square Apartments. I will try. I moved here two years ago. I came to the area one weekend and was initially looking in Brentwood for a place to move when I turned down Franklin Road and ended up right in the square. I immediately fell in love, called Harpeth Square, and got my apartment that day. In the two years I have been here, the growth has been rapid and incredibly noticeable, and that's not even taken into account what has happened before I moved here or what will happen in the future. Lost my spot. From not being able to get into restaurants and getting stuck in traffic and construction and being late to numerous appointments and meetings, to the overwhelming amount of people that are crammed into such a small area on any given day, I now feel the need to move from downtown Franklin and find a calmer area. Two years. All it took was two years. And the problems downtown Franklin is facing are getting worse. The first gentleman who spoke said that more growth and density is good because it encourages walking. Well, not everyone can walk. I have to rely on my car, and if I cannot find a parking spot and I am by myself, I don't get to go in. I don't get to experience anything. I already have issues being paralyzed living in a historic area. The issues more population density will bring will make it more difficult for me and other disabled people to come down and enjoy the downtown district. At the Ice Cream Social for the Downtown Neighborhood Association, Alderman Baggot mentioned Alpharetta, Georgia, as an example of what he didn't want Franklin to become. I moved here from Alpharetta, and I already see signs of Franklin becoming Alpharetta and following the same path. It must be recognized, and it must be corrected. The goal must be to progress without destruction, because once you destroy the charm and appeal of Franklin, you will never be able to undo the damage. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Tangi Lane, Kathy Jo Elwood, Tammy Lennox, I'm sorry, Tammy Lennox, Catherine Wilson, Kristy McClellan, and Buzz Brainerd.
Good evening. My name is Tangi Lane. I live at 707 Mount Hope Street, and I am for the Middle Eight. I was born and raised here, and I understand everyone being concerned about the charm, the character, the beauty, the peacefulness and calmness of Franklin. I've watched a lot of that change in my 45 years being here. I've watched Old Liberty Pike go away, and now there's Liberty Pike. I've watched McHatcher come in. I've watched Downs Boulevard be extended, Harpeth House, Jamison. I've watched all that change, and I too was afraid and against it. But I've learned that change is inevitable, and I feel like, because I've read the proposed plan, I've sat with the designers, I've done everything that I know to do, that they have thought through this. They have done it well, and they have put forth the effort to make this the best possible scenario. When they talk about height, it's 30 inches difference, 30 inches. That's not even three feet. So again, as a person who was born and raised here and has seen so much change and have watched so many of my family members move out because of the change, I get it. It's hard, and you don't want to see it. But Franklin is no longer the Franklin it used to be, and we have to accept that. And I think that they have thought through this, and they want to do this beautifully and do it well, and to be inclusive, and I am for it.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Jo Elwood. I live at 778 Willow Springs Boulevard. I own and manage Citizen, which is a store located on Main Street. I am here today in support of the Middle Eight. With the factory underway to becoming something amazing and the sidewalks that have been implemented, it's only natural that a concept like the Middle Eight be fantastic for this community. This town has an environment that lends to and upholds so dearly characteristics of hospitality, friendliness, giving, and kindness. And I think the Middle Eight would really do well with this. Secondly, as a mother whose kids have grown and have moved away, coming back to Franklin is a near impossibility for them. They cannot afford it. And I'm sure, like me, for those of you who have kids and grandkids, having your family close by is always a blessing. So having affordable places like the Middle Eight for my kids to even consider moving back here would be a dream of mine. Please take all these points into consideration as you consider the Middle Eight.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Lennox. I live at 1101 Downs Boulevard. I have four boys, all who were born right down the street at Williamson Medical Center. And over the past 26 years, they have been to countless pumpkin fests, Main Street festivals, lighting the tree, Dickens, race ducks down the harpeth, spent untold hours between Tinkerbell and Fort Granger, gone to school, church, farmers' markets, and even a go-kart race in the factory parking lot. They've helped with MLK and Cinco de Mayo celebrations, planted flowers at Pinkerton, cleaned up the streets after events, played with kids at the Lasco Shelter for Hurricane Katrina friends, passed out backpacks for back-to-school food distributions, and helped clean up after a tornado. They may be young, but they have already been serving our community for years. And through those years, we've seen enormous growth, and sometimes that's been hard for us. It's brought more traffic, construction, and lots of rising housing costs. But by welcoming in people from all over, it has made us the community we are today. Now that my kids are young adults, getting married and having kids, finishing grad school and going into the workforce, I want them to be able to live in the city that has helped form and shape them. They are ready to contribute to this community in new ways, but there's no place for them in this housing market, at least not outside of my house. Just as we have preserved spaces like our beautiful Harlinsdale, now it is going to require us preserving some other space that is left for some higher-density housing for those willing to live in small spaces and who will enjoy and take advantage of the opportunity to live across from the thriving Revitalize Factory, hike the park, shop downtown, now connected by sidewalks, who would enjoy this more than those young professionals and young families who have already spent so much of their lives doing so and plan to continue to grow roots and invest in Franklin? Please allow as much density for the Middle Eight project as possible so there's room for well-designed smaller units so the next generation of hometown kids like my kids and grandkids can continue to make this their kids, like my kids and grandkids, can continue to make this their home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Wilson. I live at 206 Franklin Road. I am in favor of moving forward with this proposal for the Middle Eight. I've taken time to review the Middle Eight development proposal, and I think that the variety of housing options, the small apartments, penthouses, duplexes, and single-family will be a benefit to our precious community. I appreciate the several green spaces for gathering and the softening of the look of the complex. I like that the community amenities will be available to all Middle Eight residents, not dependent on their housing choice. I like the architectural edge of the complex, a long Liberty Pike. I appreciate the way the garage entrances are hidden from the street, from the back of the property in consideration of the old Liberty neighbors. I am grateful that the McKean family is choosing to develop this property themselves rather than sell it off to a developer. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Buzz Brainard, and that is my front yard. I live at Jamison Station, 202. My balcony looks right at the property there. And I've been there for over a decade, and I've always wondered what's going to happen with that. I didn't know who owned it for a while, and I just thought something would happen eventually. And now I've seen the plans, I've seen the vision, and I'm all in. I think it's a great idea. I welcome it in my neighborhood. I love living across from the factory. I love what's going on there, and I think this is going to support the shops and the restaurants in the factory. I think it's what we need. I think it's going to enhance the neighborhood. And I have a kid too. He's 25. I kicked him out of my apartment a while ago. He had to go and find a place a little ways away with some friends. He would love to come back and live in this neighborhood that he loves too. And this new project would be attainable for him. And I love that idea. And also, a word that seems to be a little scary that I love is diversity. And since I've gotten to know my new neighbors, the McKeans, new to me, the thing that hits me the most is, they live there, and they told us that that's their backyard. They're not going to move. And so I see their vision, and I appreciate and love their vision. So I'm on board.
Thank you.
My name is Kristy McClellan. I live at 103 Meridian Court in Fieldstone Farms. I've lived in the city for 27 years. I am a professor at a Bible college in town, a teaching pastor at a church, and I raised that because for me, the Middle Eight is providing something that I have been looking for Franklin to provide for the last several years. I have young students. I have congregants in my church that have moved here or have grown up here that cannot find affordable housing. And as I sat with developers, as I sat with Truland, and I asked some of these questions, my understanding is that part of the height of the building is so that some of those smaller square-footage properties could be made available for the very people that I see struggling in the city. There was a beautiful woman at the beginning of tonight that talked about contractors moving into the city and taking advantage of people that wanted 600-square-foot living spaces. And I can tell you that I'm around people all the time in the city that would give anything to be able to afford a 600-square-foot living space. Something about the Middle Eight that has stood out to me from the very beginning is that this is a company who is not coming in to milk every dollar out of every square foot that they possibly can. The entire ingenuity, creativity, and genesis of this is based in something that is more about concrete. It is more than parking. It's more than height. It's about providing a sense of a table for people everywhere to feel like they can pull up their chair here in Franklin, Tennessee. Diversity is a good thing, not just racially and ethnically, but economically. And the Middle Eight, as far as I can see, as a person who lives and moves and has my being in so many different industries throughout the city, it's the only one that's willing to economically take the hit to provide affordable housing so that more and more people can find Franklin, Tennessee, as their home. I stand in full support of the Middle Eight, and I would encourage you to do the same.
Thank you. Okay, Laura Pereno, Dennis Norvet, Mike Tanner, Xander Morrison, Meg Blackney, and Susan Smallwood. If y'all would come forward, please. Go ahead.
My name is Laura Pereno. I live at 106 Church Street in the Brownstones. And my husband and I are relatively new to the area, and when we moved to Franklin, we chose to live downtown. One of the things that comes along with living downtown is you don't have a backyard, particularly if you're at the Brownstones. And one of the things that drew us to Franklin was the fact that because we didn't have a backyard, we had to go out the front door and find community. And so Main Street has become our backyard. Now, we came from the East Coast, and the East Coast has a particular mindset, I would say, that we have not found in Franklin, Tennessee. In Franklin, Tennessee, we walk on Main Street nightly after dinner. We pet people's dogs. We talk to strangers. We have ice cream. We find candy at the candy shop. And all of these things, we feel, are the things that make Franklin what they are. While, yes, we have beautiful architecture, and I love the buildings, I feel that the charm that comes from Franklin is the people. But one of the problems with living downtown has become, with the price of properties, the exclusivity of living downtown. And we know that I'm not the only one moving to Franklin, Tennessee. There are so many new people here coming with multiple mindsets. And the thing that my husband and I have talked about is if we can expand the footprint of the number of people who can call Main Street their backyard or downtown Franklin their home, I feel like some of these mindsets, like mine, would be shifted, right, to keep the perspective or the spirit of Tennessee Franklin alive as it is. I feel like if we don't invite people into downtown to live, more people, then things are going to change, and we're not going to have that spirit of Franklin that we came here to appreciate. So we are fully in favor of the Middle Eight project for the fact that we feel that we have a responsibility to extend the opportunity for people to come and live in a place where they can also take on the beauty of everything that Franklin has to offer here. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Norvet. I've been a resident of Franklin since 2000. Been in Nashville since 91. I raised three children here in Franklin, BJA graduates. Actually, one went to BA, but I won't bring that up. But I want to emphasize, and I currently live at Harpeth Square. So yes, I'm the profile of what these renters may look like. And it is not someone that's going to come and create a bunch of traffic on the road and create a lot of issues and problems going forward. I am a renter. Prior to that, I owned a house on Fair Street, a historic home on Fair. The diversity of residential opportunities in Franklin is, as I think we've already heard, pretty nonexistent. My children cannot afford to live here. They cannot. And it is a problem that I think needs to be solved, and I think with the residential diversity and opportunities that the Middle Eight will provide, it will create opportunities for kids, my children, my grandchildren, to come and to be a part of this walking community in this beautiful place. So I emphasize I'm in full support of the Middle Eight. I'd like to leave you with, I cannot think of a better team to support this project, specifically Amanda and Toby McKean. They have spent their entire lives here. Incredible family, and they have really worked hard to preserve the integrity of this development. And I really appreciate that coming from their hearts going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Xander Morrison. I live at 159 First Avenue North, otherwise known as Harpeth Square. I'm here to support the Middle Eight project. I moved here to go to Belmont in 2012, and immediately when my parents and I visited Franklin, I fell in love with the charm, with the vibe, with the friendliness that is Franklin. And it immediately became a goal for me to move here at some point in the future. And whenever I would talk to people at Belmont, they would be like, oh, good luck with that, because even back then, it was a difficult time to try to get into Franklin. And so as I progressed in my career, I bought a house in Fieldstone Farms, and I lived there for two years. But as a single guy, it just didn't make sense. It wasn't a viable solution, and so I started looking into renting. And so that's when I moved to the Everly. And so I lived at the Everly for three and a half years, and I just recently moved to Harpeth Square. What I love about Franklin is just the community of it. I love being able to walk around downtown. I walk to work. I walk to downtown Franklin Dentistry. I walk to the Poké Bowl place and see Chin. I love to go to Citizen and say hey to Kathy Jo. I love to go get a chocolate chip cookie at Onyx and Alabaster. Being able to be in the middle of Franklin and what's happening is super important to me. And I love just being able to park my car and walk out and be right in the middle of things. And what really energizes me about this project is the possibilities of also having some of my friends who work in downtown Franklin. They go to church here. They're involved in the communities. Their families are here. Is having an opportunity for them to move here as well and plug into the communities that they work in, that they go to church in, but that they unfortunately just can't afford to live in. And so I think that that's hugely important, being rooted in community. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike Tanner, and I'm here along with my wife, Joni, sitting back here. I've been at this microphone as a developer project. I've had a lot of things come through here in the past. Ms. Peterson has spanked my hand a couple of times and also coached me along a couple of times. So I've got great respect for this body, great respect for the staff, and what you do and how you approach what you do. And I say all that to say we've lived in Franklin for 40 years, a little over 40 years. 30 of those years are at 111 Lewisburg Avenue, right here in the historic district. We love living downtown Franklin. I'll say right off the bat, I'm in favor of this. We are in favor of this project. And I'm going to give you a couple of reasons why. As I said, we've lived in historic Franklin all these times, and we walked down tonight. But what's really important is we have 14 grandkids that all live here or have grown up here. And they've all grown up walking from our house on our brick wall with Joni, they call her Lovey, and then walk downtown. And it's very, very special. I think what we want to be able to look at when we first heard about this project, we've known Toby and Amanda for a while, but they're good friends of daughters of ours, but that really didn't even come into the picture. We saw this and thought, you know, what if there's a day where we do want to downsize out of our house? I can't even imagine leaving downtown Franklin, and I don't know where we would go, that we could go and live in someplace that is attainable without having to go get in debt or throw more money at something else. Going to a place like Middle Eight with this kind of, I hate to say it because I'm not that guy, but it's going to be a hip, cool kind of look. And so it would be so great for us to be able to move into one of these attainable apartments that we don't need a lot of space anymore. What would be the coolest and hippest thing about this, to walk down to one corner, and my grandkids are living in one of those attainable units. So that would just come full circle for us, and it would be, I'd just love for them to be able to do something like that, and them not even get in debt, but to be exposed to the kind of culture that we have here. One last thing, talking about height and change, I'm just going to leave you with this. Back in the 80s and 90s, and I'm sure Ms. Peterson will confirm this, you couldn't build a building in Franklin more than three stories. And I'm told the reason why is we didn't have a fire truck with a ladder big enough. Well, we've gotten past that. We've moved on. So I urge you to really consider this. Let's fight for the culture in the right way, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Meg Blackney, and I live at 120 Lucinda Court. So I also own a business on Main Street, a little clothing boutique. So I'm not going to say anything new that hasn't been said, but I will run through things that I think are important. The diversity is a major thing. I think that Franklin needs to welcome all the time. Employees, for me, that can live in the community is very important. I've got people coming in from Murphysboro, Nolansville. You talk about traffic. It's awful. I would love for them to just be able to hop on their bike, get to me within two and a half minutes. I also ride my bike, and I just think it's important to be able to do that, to be able to get to your work in an easy way. Also, I think it fits with the changes at the factory. I think it's a beautiful plan for the project.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Smallwood. I live at 103 Harlinsdale Court, and I would like to take a little bit of a different approach and ask that those of us in the room who are questioning this project, who are not sure of the flood implications, who are not sure of the traffic implications, we have objective experts in the room. We have Yates Bateman here, who is a stormwater professional. He would love to answer your questions. I've talked to him briefly. He has studied this project, and actually, this project would help the incidence of a flood not occurring in this area because of the way they have it engineered. We have Beth from KCI Traffic, who is an objective, brilliant traffic analyst. She doesn't have a dog in the fight. I would love for people to be able to ask her questions. What about parking? The parking is not what you think it is. The traffic Liberty Pike capacity is only used to 27% right now. How much would this improve that? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And then the gem in the room is Joe Inteendick. He's an architect internationally known, and he is a specialist in creating communities that blend in historic neighborhoods in cities, Lincoln Park, Charleston, Capitol Hill, other places. He is a gem. And I would just encourage those who have questions to maybe soften your defensiveness a little bit and talk to people and ask questions. Just ask questions. Get truth. Be a truth seeker. And let's base this decision on truth. By the way, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Okay, next, Darlene Dyson, Buton, Southers, if I'm saying that correctly, Brooke Tanner, Dr. Jim Lancaster, and then Lisa Alexander.
Hello, I'm Darlene Dyson. I live at 512 Ardmore Place. My husband and I have lived in this area since 81. Just celebrated 42 years. We've raised four sons and two adopted daughters here. And again, I'm not going to reiterate so much of what has already been said, but we are in favor of this project. We also have children who we would love, with grandchildren, we'd love them to be able to live closer, and affordability has been a real issue. And I know in our generation, size and yards was a really big deal, but our kids would really love to have the charm and the availability of all the things that the factory project and this Middle Eight project would bring. They're willing to downsize and have less to be able to do more in downtown Franklin. We are so for diversity. We are so for affordability, and we think that Truland has really spent a lot of time looking into how to do this well in this area. And so we are for this project.
Thank you.
It's bitten and smothered. My handwriting is pretty poor. Sorry about that, Mr. Lindsay. With Holiday Properties, and I represent the factory at Franklin, so we're directly across the street. We have about 50 businesses that are all, nearly all local, all small. We've got about 150,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space that we have to keep busy. So we represent a lot. That's a group that is not voicing their concern here, but they have a lot that, this means a lot, what happens across the street. So everything that's been said before about growth- So everything that's been said before about growth, it's true, it's here. This is not if you build it, they will come scenario. It's already here, so it's about how do you harness that growth in a way that's appropriate with the community? And we absolutely are in favor of this development. We think it does the right things. They've spent, the developer and planning staff has spent a lot of time working on this and found a solution that is appropriate. It's, in terms of density, I think it's a step. I think it could go further, but I think it's a reasonable step. I think the massing of the buildings is appropriate. It does not overshadow the factory. This is very accretive to what we're doing. But at the heart of it, the factory is, it's still, by the way, it's still an experiment. It's still a project, right? Everybody assumes that it's just gonna be successful. And, you know, it's been 20 years, and, you know, it's still growing. But it's, at the heart of it, it's a neighborhood center. And, you know, we get tourists, but we rely on the neighborhood, the community. And what we like most about this project is obviously the density puts more residents within a walking distance. But it also allows for more diversity of, you know, on the income spectrum, people can afford to live here. And younger populations, younger working professionals, younger families, and not just the super rich. And, you know, change is happening already. It's about how you control it in a way that makes sense. And by the way, this is a commercial district, so it's, this is not a neighborhood. This is intended to be a commercial district. So we're in favor. I hope you feel the same.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Brooke Tanner. I am born and raised in Franklin. I would list off all the addresses, but we've lived pretty much all over Franklin, went to every public school there was. Everybody's talking about change, and change happens, and it's coming, and Franklin's changing. I kinda wanna flip the coin on it and say Franklin hasn't changed. People say to me all the time, Franklin's so different. And I'm like, no, it's still my Franklin. I went through a big change of getting a divorce about five years ago. I have four kids, special needs. That was a crossroad of, am I gonna have to leave Franklin? Because I can't afford it as a single mom at the time. My kids needed Franklin Special School District schools. There was no option to pull out my boys with autism. Franklin rallied behind me. This community rallied behind me as a single mom with special needs kids, and they said, you're staying. We'll work it out. We will figure it out. That's Franklin. That's the Middle Eight. I don't, I don't understand of the fear of affordable housing or a fear of change. Franklin's still Franklin. We're still for our people. We are still for each other. If I hadn't had Franklin, my boys would not be successful at Centennial High with autism. My daughter wouldn't be successful in the school that she's at. I wouldn't be in Franklin without affordable housing five years ago. So yes, change is gonna happen, but change is not really what everybody thinks it is. It's still Franklin, and this is what's giving us the opportunity to stay Franklin.
Great. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Jim Lancaster. It's nice to meet you all. Thank you so much, first of all, for your service for the community. Appreciate the time. I haven't spoken to you all before, and I'm speaking in support for the Middle Eight Project. I've been in Tennessee for over 25 years. I have a transplant, I transplanted from Mississippi. I grew up in a small town, quite honestly, that in a lot of ways is not as famous as Franklin, but it's very much like Franklin. And quite honestly, I've been in the middle Tennessee area for 25 years. About three years ago, I was fortunate enough to move to Franklin. And even as a Tennessee primary care physician for a couple of decades, that was a stretch for me, right? But I'm so glad I made that move. I was fortunate enough to move to Franklin, be a Franklinite, fortunate enough to convince a Franklin girl that you just heard from to marry me. So this is my hometown. And I moved here, I was so happy to move here because, I mean, I truly believe that America's best small town, right? That's why I moved here from the Nashville area. I didn't move here because it was America's most exclusive town or America's, you know, most expensive small town to live in. I moved here because it was a real small town that felt that way. And I think that this project supports that. I don't want to live in a small town where everyone who works in the town has to commute from an hour away because it's so expensive. That's not the kind of small town I moved, I came from, not the kind of small town I wanted to move to. So I would urge you to support this project. I think incredible, attainable housing for real people, real families, is a wonderful thing for this community. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Right. Thank you.
Before I start, we were told that it would be very respectful if one of us spoke for a large group. And so everybody that I represent here, I'm just gonna ask them to stand for a second because they didn't all sign speaker cards because we were told the meeting would go on forever, and so it would be respectful not to do it that way. My name's Lisa Alexander. I'm at 160 Lancaster Drive. Building community, whether at work or church, is something I have experience with, and I've found that community functions best when it coalesces around important things like families, faith, and how our hometown grows. For neighbors in Harpeth Meadows, Splendor Ridge, Franklin Road, Miles Manners, Daniels Drive, Old Liberty and Jameson Station, and beyond, the proposed Middle Eight Project has allowed us to gather around what we care for and want to preserve in Franklin. We care about what Franklin stands for, Southern history and small-town charm. We care that we live in unique neighborhoods that are distinctive, both in appearance and character. We care that the factory, about the factory, we want to see it preserved as an iconic symbol, not only symbolic of Franklin, but of the men and women who built stoves and mattresses and created industry and prosperity. Because we care about these things, tonight we're here to ask that you restrict the height of any new buildings to be no higher than 3+1, complementing the character and design of Jameson Station, that the prominence of the factory as a landmark will be preserved, and that a new traffic study will be conducted, and that the neighbors' request for adequate parking will be embraced instead of reduced. In addition, as neighbors, we share a sense of ownership in the stretch of Franklin Road. Young families and young retirees, the up-and-coming and middle-of-lifers, we all live there and have invested our money and hearts into our homes, each other, and into this part of town. What Mr. Bill Smith used to call "a little slice of heaven." Our collective began with five neighbors just seven weeks ago. Since then, we have collected 1,668 signatures on our online petition, and I email biweekly updates to over 160 residents. What started out as an opposition to development isn't that, we just want it changed. And now we are in talks to become the North Franklin Neighborhood Association. As we navigate this change, we are committed to representing our North Franklin neighbors in meetings for Envision Franklin, in talks about the new factory district, and in following this zoning process through to the end so that our collective presence won't be temporary but will be around to significantly impact both the realized vision of Middle Eight and also the continued thoughtful, steady growth of Franklin for years to come. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Did anyone not fill out a card that would still like to make a statement quickly? Please come forward quickly.
My name's Tony Brandy. I'm on Daniels Drive. I face kind of the property that the McKeeans, and we love the McKeeans and all they do. And we appreciate all the wonderful comments everyone has made. My only concern is, I do love the design. I think it's thoughtfully done, and I love the whole idea of the diversity. But here's my issue that I have. We could set a bad precedent. I think zoning laws are put in place to bring restriction, and the fact that they want to rezone, that's, that could set a dangerous precedence. If we grant this rezoning and grant the new height development, what's to stop more and more of that to be done? That's my issue. So I think, you know, we live in a day and age where lots of people don't want to abide by the law. They don't want to accept the restrictions over their lives. I think that's dangerous. We need to realize that other residents have had to abide by certain restrictions. If you're in a flood zone, you have to carry flood insurance, et cetera. So that's my main issue. Not the beauty, not keeping, you know, the charm of Franklin. I'm all for that, but I think the city has to make a decision. Do we change the rules? You know? And once you change those rules, guess what? The next developer from out of town that wants to come and put a five-story building or a six-story building, how are you gonna make that argument? I've been here over 10 years, and now I drive down Mallory, and I look over Cold Springs, and it's skyscraper after skyscraper. And I'm all for the charm too and development, but I think you have to have some restrictions, and that's why the zoning rules are put in place. And yes, it's painful. Yes, it might mean this might have to be redesigned to comply, like everyone else has had to comply, though. So as painful as it is, you know, you just have to comply, unless you set a bad precedent. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Do we have a presentation by the applicant?
My name is Gary Vogon with Kaiser Vogon Design. Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. Appreciate everybody's opportunity to allow us to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of our client, Truland Development. I'm the person up here tonight, but we have a great team behind me that we have put our best effort for this project. And we want to personally thank planning staff, engineering, traffic, that we've been working through this process. We've come a long way to get to this process. My partner and I, Dwight, have worked here since 1996. This is not an easy town to get through. We know that. The city staff has the back of projects, and the people's back. This planning board has that, allows us to bring this opportunity before you. We've been through historic zoning, DRC committees, we've been through Envision Franklin. We're in alignment with Envision Franklin. Those are the things that we look forward to when we present a project to allow for a rezoning opportunity. We've had two neighborhood meetings that have basically been an open-door book under the hood of what is exactly happening for this project. And we have best, put our best foot forward to address every question we can to the best of our ability. We're proud of the design, the elements of the project that meet the intent of the Envision Franklin zoning code, all the technical regulations that we have to go through, and work with our fellow staff and officials like yourself hand-in-hand through we go through this process. So I've heard great comments from the support, I've heard comments from the other side, but I always have notes when I come up here when I start speaking, but this is one you just go by the fly, that this is something very unique and an opportunity for this community. This location, preservation of density, diversity of housing, streetscape, walkability, open space, just the transition of uses to the adjacency of the factory, Franklin Road, Liberty Pike, Daniels Drive. All those things go into the effort of a rezoning plan. So I have my team behind me to answer any questions you may have about this rezoning effort, so I'll open up the floor for your discussion. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So is there a motion on this item?
I move to approve the recommendation to approval to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Second.
So you have a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Mayor and Alderman by Commissioner Harrison and a second by Commissioner Orr. Is there any discussion? Alderman, Peterson.
I would like to start off by saying that I appreciate that the staff drew me a picture of within a mile of kind of downtown. There's virtually nothing that is anything close to having the density that this project has. I mean, you know, even looking back at the old, old things that might have 14 dwelling units per acre, the old Executive House that's on Hillsborough Road and everything, but most everything is much less dense than this. And as I say, that is just really right downtown. I think of something having this much density as being out toward the interstate. And the other thing is that I know Jameson Station has, was allowed to have some extra height, but basically, there's nothing that's bigger than three stories. I mean, you know, I guess downtown the Harpeth is, but I'm trying to say, as far as you're looking at what is like this area, this does not fit. It's, it has too much density, and the heights are really much higher than anything, and that's not just within the mile. It's virtually, you know, out to the interstate almost to see anything that has these heights or over to Cold Springs. So that is one thing. Another thing that I have a great concern about is, well, this has to do with stormwater, but the impervious area there, because if you look at the pictures of this, and I know we're not, we're just talking about rezoning right now, but if you look at this with the development plan, it's almost all paved over, almost all paved over. And so the concern with the people who live in the area that already have problems with not just flooding, but stormwater coming down, and some of the houses, I'll just use an example. On Old Liberty, on Old Liberty, there are so many houses that have been built up so that they would not be, you know, in the floodplain there. And they're still having a lot of problems right now with, the only thing that's out there in this area is just, you know, some trees and some undergrowth and everything there. I mean, it's all pervious surface where, you know, the water could soak in a little bit and everything. But they already have problems with the stormwater there. And I was online with the two, two and a half hour plus meeting, the Zoom meeting, whenever this was discussed, what, was that Monday night? It seems like forever ago now, but, and they're talking about how they're going to handle the stormwater for this, and it's going, they said that there would be oversized underground pipes. But again, I haven't seen or really heard anything, even though I was watching that, about exactly how this is going to be handled. Because as I say, the problems are already out there with, with the water just coming down. Well, we haven't also said everything down below that is really below it. I mean, it's, it just, from Liberty, it just goes right down, you know, the land just drops right down there. And then it, there are some, there's some real concern. And I went back to look, and it says existing impervious area was just like 14 point, 14, it is 14, 14% of an acre. And the runoff, though, has got to be tremendous. And another thing is that where I thought that there was supposed to be a detention pond or something like that, it now says it's a dog park. And so I'm really concerned about the slope there. It says it's basically 14 to 19% slope going from Liberty down to what's behind it there. And as I say, going from Liberty down to what's behind it there, and as I say, so much of this, whenever we're looking at it, it's just paved over. There's very little really open ground out there. And so, and also the thing about the number of stories, you know, in the front, it looks like however many, and then they've got the parking underneath, and so from the back, there's really like, what, six or seven stories there, but there's just, there's too much of a concern there. I think, I think it's too much. I think it's really too much, especially in that particular area, which has had problems for a number of years.
Go ahead. As far as I am concerned, when you're doing a project like this, there's talk about, there's talk about reducing car trips, there's talk about walkability, there's talk about livability. The only way you're going to achieve this is to have a dense product, project that's put in, because one-and-a-half-acre lots, five-acre lots, people are not going to be sense of community. These apartments are also affordable, which is something my kids cannot move back to Franklin. They were born and raised here. This would give them an opportunity to live in Franklin, and live in downtown Franklin, and be a part of what this great thing is going on with the factory district. I think it'd be very beneficial to the city, and I think there is quite a bit of green space still included in this, is that right, Gary?
Yes, sir, I can address some of those comments if you, if you so.
Okay, so I still support this, and I think it'd be a great addition to our community.
Before, so you can maybe just address them all at once. So I want, what I would like to say, and I addressed this in our joint conceptual workshop, and I don't think we ever got back to it, the parking, the request for parking, and I know you have something else coming up, but I want to get this out of here now. The request for a reduction in parking spaces is a great concern to me. We got that wrong. When I used to sit on the Board of Mayor and Alderman, we got that wrong several times in the past, so I'm very concerned with that. Franklin does not fit the mode of a lot of cities across the United States, so I don't think we can be compared with that. We have, we have, some 13-year-old kids have a car already waiting on them, okay? So I'm very concerned about that. The stormwater situation, I do have a concern about that, I really, really do. And the third thing is, and I know, I know I'm very sensitive about this, so bear with me, okay? I want to be sure that people really understand, because I think a lot of people, I'm passionate about this, just like a lot of folks who've got up and said that they want their kids to live in Franklin. I do too. So affordable for some people is not so affordable for other people. So I don't want people to be out there thinking, as they watch this meeting later on and all that, that this is the cure-all, the end-all, the be-all for affordable housing in Franklin, because what is affordable for some people is not for others. So I think we need to, you know, do your research before you think that that's what this is, okay? So I just want to be clear on that, and so please, 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 make sure we do our research on that, so I just want to be clear on that. But those are my concerns about this project, okay? All right. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so this area I'm very familiar with, I lived off of Old Liberty Pike for years, quite a few years, and so, you know, throughout the week, I've had walked over there, and so very kind of familiar with, especially the factory and all. And looking at this project, and kind of knowing, I know factory is going under some, a lot of renovations and changes, is that I see the density of this project, a very big benefit to what is trying to be achieved in the factory district. A lot of us might be familiar with the factory, where on the weekends, or during dinner hours, the weekends you go out there, and again, my concern on this project is parking. When you go there on the weekend, you cannot find parking. It is the place to be, it is packed. Three Daughters Bakery has a line all the way through there, it's fun. But then when you go, not on the weekend, when you go on the off-hours, what I often saw walking through the factory was some businesses struggling because they did not have the density to support them. And so that's, you know, one thing, it's kind of, you know, there's good, and there's bad, there's things we dislike, and there's things we like, but if we want something like the factory district to happen, that will be something that allows those businesses and everything to become a thriving project. You can look at other mixed uses in the city, like McEwen, you have a lot of density, a lot of housing there, and you go off and look at even off-hours there, and there's people in those businesses, and it's being successful. But again, biggest issue I have would be parking.
If I could say one other thing, I don't know that I said the density is, what, 38 units per acre?
Yes, ma'am, 38, 38.1, I guess.
38 housing units per acre. Whether you're talking about acre lots, or five-acre lots, or something like that, I mean, you're talking about 38 on one acre. Go ahead.
I have a question for staff. Staff, do you know the density of Harpeth Square? I was gonna...
It's the only one, it is the only one. That is the only one. If you look at all the rest of them, they are not even half that, even the ones that are...
I've not had privilege to see that document, so I don't know how old that document is. I mean, just print it, I don't know how old the developments are on that document.
But go ahead.
Chairman Harrison, would you like me to list off the densities that I provided, Alderman Peterson?
How old are the developments? When were they constructed?
I did not document that information. I was asked to do...
Because years ago, we had a suburban spread as opposed to urban growth now, so I think the age of those developments will make a big factor as to whether they are dense or not dense in today's market. Sorry to interrupt you.
You let me speak when you wish for me to do, Mr. Chairman, so I can address some of these if you would.
Yeah, if you want to address some of those points.
I'm sorry?
Do you want to address some of the points that were raised?
Yeah, I just wanted to start with Ms. Peterson and some of her things. She mentioned, first she had mentioned density. The density of Harpeth Square, if you strip out the hotel, is 60 dwelling units an acre, 3% open space. It is a three, four-story building, also in downtown Franklin. The next thing was the landscape surface ratio, I've mentioned this before to you. We are exceeding the landscape surface ratio for this project by 10%. Landscape surface ratio is anything green that is permeable on the site. The city minimum requirement of landscape surface ratio is 20%. 20% within a planned development district has to be permeable, grass, turf, trees, landscape, no pavers or perme, or you could be permeable pavers, but has to be 20% minimum. We are at 30% landscape surface ratio, an increase of 10%. Stormwater, your team, Mr. Wiseman, Lance, Joe, very thorough in their review of the documents. We have our civil engineer, we can address specific questions, but we're on the rezoning, we can talk about that for the development plan, but if we need to, we can, but we know those stringent regulations within our city. Our team knows that, I know that, Roger knows that, Jimmy knows that, very detailed. Parking, Ms. Allen?
Yes, please.
And Jennifer also mentioned that. Mrs. Williamson, sorry. That was something we took very thoughtful detail in. We've mentioned this in the neighborhood meeting twice, both times, we have KCI to support the documentation, we visited seven different communities within Franklin, and comparable, you know, multifamily developments. We did go to Harpeth Square, it's mixed use, we went to McEwen, it's mixed use, but the predominant was single, or was multifamily developments. We went there on a Wednesday evening, counted cars, I didn't, one of Beth's team members went out there and counted cars from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, to see what the parking was. And there is a vast, just not occupied spaces in those developments that are multifamily. We know as a team and my firm, that the parking in the city of Franklin is very high. We know it's auto-oriented, but that's why we focused on specific projects in this community and walked them, physically counted spaces, and came to this adjustment of our ratio. So it's not going to Nashville, it's not going to Murfreesboro, it's right here in our town. We're looking at our parking, and we have that data, it's in the documents, all technical, beyond my head, but it's very simple in terms of, the parking is not that domain. And environmentally, there's a lot of things that you don't want to overpark a site, you've got too much parking. You go to Harpeth Square, a lot of empty spaces, a lot of these multifamily spaces, communities, empty spaces. It drives up costs, more pervious surface, all the things you want to reduce, you're asking for more. So that's the balance, and that's what we're providing. More green space, less parking, less pervious pavement, or less impervious pavement, more green space. Parking is underground. We are, we are at 43% open space, and there's a difference between open space and landscape surface ratio. Open space is plazas, courtyards, pavers, walkable community. The minimum within a PUD is 15%, we're 43% open space. Again, we're 10% higher for landscape surface ratio. It's all based on parking underground, and offering a diverse of housing within a property that is walkable to downtown, park at Harlesdale Farm, the factory, and Jamison Station, and neighborhoods throughout the community. The attainable housing, you've mentioned, that's something we spoke to great detail on all the calls, open to our Alderman, planning commissioners who have spoken with us, Toby and Amanda have opened their hearts and their house to meet with people to talk about that specifically. I've heard a lot of great things from the neighborhood about, and my daughter particularly, she's 22, she would love to live in Franklin. This gives her a chance. I'm one of many that have come up here to say, there's an opportunity now for a smaller unit with this density. So that gives you an opportunity for somebody, somebody fresh out of my staff that could afford to live in a smaller unit with this allowable density. So I just want to address those questions, I think I hit them all.
Was there, what about the dog park?
Oh, so we want to work with engineering and the stormwater group that, we want to make this stormwater amenitized. There's so many great opportunities to do something unique in stormwater. Sure, we're containing water, cleaning water, holding water, the first inch, all that, but we want to make something that's, have that there, but you can still do something, have a trail next to it, a sidewalk, a bench, have a small area, it doesn't have to be very large for a dog park, it's just something that somebody could use within a walkable community. It gives an amenity that is something that's needed, functional, so those two can work hand-in-hand.
Well, it's certainly needed, because I drive through Germantown and Salem Town in Nashville every day to work, and there are hundreds and hundreds of dogs, and our experience in similar kinds of developments in Nashville is that, that a dog park, while on the surface seems to be a great amenity, that's, it's needed, because every young lady that lives in Germantown has a couple of dogs that are about waist-tall.
Right.
And if I can key on that word "waist," it's a horrendous, it is a horrendous effect. A dog park produces, it's an enormous source of pollution, so you've got to give consideration, because if you put a dog park in there, and if all the runoff from the dog park runs into the neighbor's backyard, then there's, there's going to be an untenable situation that's created from that. So just, whatever happens going forward with this whole dog park thing, needs to, I mean, let's be on the cutting edge, okay?
Yes.
Because a dog park can be, I mean, it can, it can absolutely contaminate a creek, or...
And we're not saying it's a dog park, it's just somehow that gives an opportunity, but yes, yes, sir, understand, understood.
So, and there's been a lot of just really compelling discussion tonight from, on both sides of this, and I just appreciate so much, all of you. You've been all extremely respectful for your fellow citizens, and respecting that everybody has a thought and an opinion, and it's based on compelling reasons, and this crew has been phenomenal tonight, I appreciate it. We've been providing feedback on this project for months, we've expressed our concern, not just about the height, but the massing, you know, how big a project this could be. We've dealt with height by saying it's, it'll be within 30 inches of the height of Jamison Station, neighboring, is that...
We're asking for, to maintain the elevation of the height we're asking for, of the elevation of 57 feet.
57 feet.
That, per the diagrams we've been showing, that's the elevation we have been held to, 57 feet, working with the historic zoning commission.
Compared to Jamison Station is...
But yes, the height we're seeking is 57 feet, correct?
Yeah, ask the question, and then, Steph, how tall is, if I may? Can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
And how tall is Jamison Station, Steph?
We have not done a survey of that building. Their plans show that the height is 54 feet 6 inches.
So it is, because people are throwing around that, I just wanted to make sure we're getting facts, and that's what I thought, okay.
Okay. Another concern, that it blend with the community, I heard concerns about parking, surface parking on neighboring properties, you know, if somebody pulls into the underground parking garage and it's full, and they park on the street behind the, you know, the development, and they deprive another resident of their normal place to park, that's a, that's a bad scenario.
That's bad.
And then, and then my question too, because I've got younger, younger adults, young adult children that would love to be able to afford to live in Franklin too, so, okay. Any other comments, questions?
We're going to also talk about the development plan separately.
Development plan is the next item.
I want to ask about some pictures on, on some of these pages. Can't wait to see, 43% open space?
Okay, so for this item, item 11, we've got, we've got a motion recommending approval to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, motion made by Commissioner Harrison and seconded by Commissioner Orr, and I think we've exhausted our discussion on this, so by roll call vote, Commissioner Allen?
No.
Commissioner Harrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
Alderman Peterson?
No.
And Commissioner Williamson?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion passes by a vote of four to two. Item number 12 is consideration of Resolution 2023-30, a resolution approving a development plan, this is similar to the last motion, this now is a development plan for the Middle Eight PUD subdivision with one modification of development standards for parking for the property located east of Franklin Road and south of Liberty Pike, located at 209 Old Liberty Pike. Staff, presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff has been meeting about this property with the property owner since July of 2022. We have given feedback on the design over the last year to work towards a plan that meets all of the city's development standards. The design team has taken staff's guidance into consideration, and made many changes to the plan over the course of a year. In a few instances, the development team decided to pursue alternate standards prior to submitting this development plan. I'd like to address several topics of concern that have been voiced tonight and about the proposed development. Quickly, I'll go to the stats of the project first. The plan proposes 254 multifamily dwelling units, six single-family homes, 12 duplex dwelling units, those are six structures, and three townhomes. It does provide a small amount of retail space in the form of a restaurant as a use that can support the surrounding community. One of the topics that was discussed was previous approvals. On February 13th, 2023, the development team presented their plan to the Historic Zoning Commission, and received a preliminary recommendation of approval for the height, scale, massing, and layout of the structures as it related to the limits of the historic preservation overlay. It should be noted, however, that the southern facades of the two multifamily buildings, and the single-family and duplex structures south of Foster Lane are outside of the historic preservation overlay, and are not part of the Historic Zoning Commission's jurisdiction. So the Historic Zoning Commission did not consider those facades or buildings in their recommendation. The design team then brought forth an Invision Franklin Plan Amendment to this body on March 23rd, 2023, in which they proposed special consideration language specific to this site, as highlighted in my previous presentation. The planning commission voted to approve the additional specifications. Another topic being discussed is building height. In reviewing the recommendations of a... In reviewing the recommendations of Envision Franklin, staff finds that the proposed development plan complies with the multifamily residential design concepts general guidelines by providing duplexes, townhomes, and single-family structures along the periphery of the proposed development. It is also consistent with the language of the special consideration. It provides additional height by proposing underground parking. The height is shown in relation to Jameson Station on the development plan, but staff has found that varying technologies and estimating methodologies yield different heights of Jameson Station. The design team has consistently stated in previous meetings that the Middle Eight Building closest to Jameson Station will be no taller than two feet, six inches from Jameson Station's height. Therefore, in the absence of a detailed survey and measurement, staff has included a condition of approval that at the time of site plan, the heights will be verified, and that the building plans will ensure that the new construction is no more than two feet, two feet, six inches, measuring from the top of parapet to the top of parapet of the two buildings. To further ensure that this height comparison is maintained, staff has also included a stat, a condition of approval that prior to the above-ground construction commencing, an as-built survey will be completed to document the top of the foundation elevation. Staff would also like to note that while the zoning ordinance in Envision Franklin addressed transitions between buildings adjacent to the new development, it does not speak to proper transitions within the proposed development. There is a three-story change between the north side and the south side of Foster Lane, and a significant change in the mass between the multifamily buildings and the single-family and duplex units. Another topic of discussion is Liberty Pike. In regards to other Franklin, Envision Franklin amendments being pursued separately from this development, the Liberty Pike streetscape improvements are something being investigated through the Factory District Design Concept Proposal with the Envision Franklin Update. The decision of whether or not to create a unique cross-section for Liberty Pike within the boundary of the Factory District has not yet been determined, nor has it been determined whether or not right-of-way would need, would be needed to achieve an updated cross-section. The property owners have confirmed that they wish to include any streetscape elements into their proposal once decided, and so staff has included condition of approval number forty-one that requires the Middle Eight to incorporate Liberty Pike streetscape elements into their plan during the site plan approval process. Another topic that we've been talking about is parking. The plan does include a shared parking study to justify the amount of parking provided on-site. The plan provides each single-family duplex and townhome unit with a two-car garage. The additional third space required for the three-bedroom duplex and townhome units is provided through parallel parking adjacent to the properties along the south side of Foster Lane. Also, the parking study provided by the applicant shows how the difference in peak use times between multifamily and restaurant uses can provide a parking reduction of thirty-two spaces. This reduction, along with the proposed reduced parking counts proposed in the modification of standards, account for the required parking for the multifamily and restaurant uses being met by the underground parking structure and the parallel parking spaces along the north side of Foster Lane. In regards to that modification of standards I just mentioned, the applicant is requesting one modification of standards from the parking table ten point six, specific to parking requirements for multifamily uses. The request includes a reduction for studio and one-bedroom apartments from one point five spaces per unit to one point oh two spaces per unit. A reduction for the two-bedroom units from two point five spaces per unit to one point eight-nine spaces per unit, and a reduction of the three-bedroom units from three spaces per unit to two point seven-six spaces per unit. That's a lot of numbers. This request, if granted, reduces the number of spaces provided for the multifamily use from five hundred and twenty-nine spaces to four hundred and seven spaces, for a reduction of a hundred and twenty-two spaces. The applicant has cited nationally-recognized parking study publications and used only factors that were applicable to our city when analyzing alternate standards. They also gathered parking utilization rates from seven existing multifamily developments in Franklin to ensure that the national numbers were consistent with the local environment. Staff has verified the parking data from the national publications and can support the reduction as proposed. Staff recommends approval of M O S one for parking, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommended the Board of Mayor and Alderman to approve Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, I'm assuming we've kind of run our course on, on public comments, so, anybody have any compelling files, thirty-second statement to make? Seeing none, um, we'll go to a presentation by applicant?
Yes, sir. Gary Vogon with Kaiser Vogon Design, landscape architect, local Franklin, Tennessee, on behalf of our client, Truland Development. Um, again, want to thank staff, who we've been working with, uh, very succinctly with. Uh, as I mentioned, we've had a long road before us to go through Historic Zoning Design Review Committee. Um, Envision Franklin, as we asked for, the request for additional height may be considered with underground parking. We are honoring that request in terms of respectfully requesting additional height on this project. We are in agreement with all staff comments except number ninety-one and ninety-two. We'd simply like to, uh, strike those comments and just basically request that building number two adjacent Jameson Station be a maximum height of fifty-seven feet per our diagrams, um, for this project. We just don't feel that we, at this conceptual stage, to be held by that exact inch measurement. Uh, we have studied the buildings adjacent us, uh, we have architectural renders to show this, I can have Joe Intunovic speak as well to the building elevations, um, but all the comments, we're in agreement, except for that one, those two items in particular.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Okay. So I did kind of blow past, um, public comment. Does anybody really want to make a, a comment at this point? Yes, sir. Would you approach the lectern, please?
Yeah, Ed Osia at one eighteen Lancaster Drive.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm a geologist by professional training and education and so forth. And my question is, um, regarding the underground parking. Uh, I'm not seeing any, I guess, information or data on how, how deep below ground they plan to, to go. The groundwater table in this particular area is about six, six twenty-five feet, mean sea level. So if the applicant can address that in some form, I mean, I'm not going to hold him to it.
Yep.
If you could just give me an idea, appreciate it.
Okay.
Uh, Yates Spademan, I'm with former Lucas Engineering, the civil engineer for the project. Our lowest level of parking is at six forty and one inch, so that'd be more than fifteen feet above the water table.
Above the water table.
Okay, as he spoke to six twenty-five.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. You have anything else, Gary?
Uh, get my notes out here, quick. Sorry. No, I think that was it. We're in agreement with all, all staff comments, we just let you remove number, number ninety-one and ninety-two, and just respectfully request that our building be maximum elevation of fifty-seven feet for the multifamily building adjacent Jameson Station. That's it.
Okay.
And I can answer any other questions you may have.
Okay. Is there a motion? Is there a motion on? Okay.
Um, staff would just comment that number ninety-one, that condition is based on our understanding of the recommendation from the Historic Zoning Commission for their preliminary recommendation of approval. And if the height is deemed to be a different level, we would want that to go back, we would need that to go back to the Historic Zoning Commission for a new recommendation before proceeding forward in the process. So just something to consider as part of that. Their recommendation from staff's review of the minutes and the videos was with the understanding, as well as the submittal materials, would be that the height difference is Jameson Station at fifty-four feet, six inches, and that this proposal of building height would be fifty-seven feet. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that.
So do we have a motion on this item? I'll move for approval of staff conditions.
Second.
So this is a recommendation back to BOMA? Yeah. Recommendation to, to BOMA, Commissioner Harrison?
Yes, correct, I amend my motion.
In a second?
Yes.
Commissioner Orr? Seconded by Commissioner Orr. So we have motion in a second, and our procedure here in a case like this where we've got a, a request for a modification of standards, um, we will, we will consider the, um, the request for the modification of standards, um, before we complete the, the vote on the main motion. And so for modification of standards, number one, the applicant is requesting one modification of standards to modify minimum parking standards for multifamily to one point zero-two spaces per studio unit, one point zero-two spaces per one-bedroom unit, uh, unit, one point eight-nine spaces per two-bedroom unit, and two point seven-six spaces per three-bedroom So is there a motion for the request for modification of standards?
I'll move for approval of modification, modification of standards, number one.
So a motion for approval of modification of standards, number one, by Commissioner Harrison?
I'll second that.
And a, and a second by Commissioner Williamson? Is there any further discussion on M O S one?
Yes. Uh, legal, uh, has told us before, if we ever voted no for something, we need to state why. So let me say this, and I think I've said this before, uh, twenty-some-odd years ago, went down this rabbit hole, will never do it again. Now, maybe at a lesser amount, but those, that amount of, uh, reductions, a hundred and something parking spaces, I cannot, I will not, uh, have an egg on my face, so no, I can't.
Okay.
I can't agree to that, not in this day and age. I will not support it. And very seldom will I go against recommendation of staff, this time I will.
Okay. Any other? Yes, Alderman Peterson?
The other thing is, uh, I believe we haven't said tonight that the, uh, parking underneath the buildings is going to be gated, so in other words, no one can go into there other than the residents?
It's open.
Do you hear what I'm saying? I said, isn't the, uh, parking underneath the buildings gated, and it's going?
Joe, would you, just address this, if you don't mind? Mr. Joe Intunovic, please.
Yes, we have controlled access, but it's also visible by people that are in the lobby at that location. So if someone was coming to the retail, for instance, and wanted to park on that level, they simply pull up and they have, and it will have an attendant, uh, at that location. But usually, um, any one of the, any one of the residents will have a card or a FOB, and they'll be able to FOB themselves into the garage.
But you're saying other people will be able to get into it?
Uh, which other people were your...
I mean, people that are not the residents? Be able to go into that, into that garage?
Visitors and people that are coming to the three thousand square foot retail area, they would come and they would pull up, and there would be an attendant there that they can gain access to the garage in that manner.
People that shop there, they said that at the joint conceptual, yes.
I know, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Did I answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, you did, because I did not understand before that it was going to be an attendant there all the time.
Well, um, I think we had responded to a number of questions that had come up about how we gain access to the garage, and the garage is from the south side, is from the new road that we're putting in on the south side.
Exactly.
And, um, we are accommodating all of the parking for the multifamily buildings, the two multifamily buildings in the below-grade parking. So they'll be able to come and go.
Right.
Uh, as you will. Uh, visitors will be able to park on the street, as we've documented in our documents, and people that are in the single-family homes and within the duplexes will have parking within their individual units.
Exactly.
So, um, but access to the garage will be much, much like I explained, we have our main lobbies then located also along that new street that we're creating, and therefore those will be manned, and they will actually have access, control to both of the gates from that point.
As staff, can I ask a question, please? Mr. Intunovic, it was my understanding that the peak hours of the restaurant space are at different times in the multifamily space, and the ability to share those spaces is applicable. However, that needs to be accessible during the day to the restaurant use. How is that restaurant being, how can they access those spaces? It's my understanding that there was a portion of the plan, the parking plan, that was always accessible. I heard you say that it's entirely key FOBs. Can you please describe what's going on there?
Well, we would have a control gate at that location, the key FOB, the FOBs, which would be, and, and these details are yet to be worked out precisely as we're developing the engineering of the building. But we would be able to have, um, the residents have access to the garage versus the key FOB. And then the individual parking for the, the restaurant, there'll be space available within the garage, but there'll simply be a control, a person there being able to allow them entrance into the garage, um, to those individual spaces that will be available within the garage.
Beth, would you care to elaborate on that?
No, it's really about the control.
No, I mentioned that we have parking available. That's right. Go ahead.
So this might be a little bit redundant, but the, in the parking study, we document there are thirty-three spaces that are designated, and I think this is what you're speaking to, um, like guest spaces, which may be visitor spaces, or maybe for the, the cafe space. And those spaces are accessible, and, and, um, whether they're in front of the gate or there's a, an attendant that they can let them behind the gate, they're accessible to people. And they, a FOB is not required and not the only way to gain access. Is that fair?
Only thirty-three?
So you're saying there's, there's, there's an area within the underground parking that's not controlled by the gate? For these thirty-some spaces?
I believe that, I'm not, I'm not the architect, so I'm looking at him. Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's, it is accessible to those spaces, than the parking garage.
Okay. Okay. Any other?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I've heard the term restaurant use, cafe use, uh, kiosk. Is that area strictly for the residents that are living there, or is it something you anticipate there'll be a high-traffic demand in and out for an actual bigger restaurant-style facility?
Yes, sir.
What's, what is your intent with that business?
Yeah, the intent is really to allow the access to the tenants for that, that restaurant space or coffee, Danish, you know, small, uh, food service, but it is open to the public, but it's not, you know, we have competition across the street of the factory, that's what they do, that's their expertise. This is something for the benefit of this residence, but if somebody decide to come there and see, it's something simple, but it's not a sit-down lunch, it's, it's more casual, so to speak, yeah.
So much more, smaller side of, of a traffic... So much more smaller side of the traffic load than?
Correct.
Full-service restaurant.
Yeah, correct.
All right, that's a big difference.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Williamson.
Yeah, the one question I had is I know across the street you have the factory, and sometimes they get really, really high traffic load and parking's an issue sometimes. For any parking that's not in the garage, are there any controls as far as who can park there? Because on one hand, you know, people like more parking, but on the other hand, you want to definitely protect whatever spaces those residents might need.
Yeah. The developer has seeked the counsel of a kind of a traffic expert, not traffic, but a parking expert in terms of its uses for mixed uses, to control the parking for the residents, for the tenants, for guests, for commercials. So all of that is controlled.
Okay.
And we've got some documentation in the package as well that speaks to that.
Okay.
Yes. It's very detailed.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I guess the other question would be, on the three-bedroom units, then you're not even saying three parking places.
Correct.
All right. So we have a motion for approval of modification of standards number one by roll-call vote. Commissioner Allen?
No.
Commissioner Harrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
Alderman Peterson?
No.
And Commissioner Williamson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lindsey votes aye as well. So that motion passes. So that puts us back to the main motion. This is a motion of recommendation of approval to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with staff conditions.
Can we speak to those conditions, Chairman?
Sure.
About the conditions I was asking about?
Okay.
Could we get some clarity?
The building height again?
Correct.
Staff, the scenario you described a few minutes ago?
Yes.
You heard the scenario she described a minute ago?
Correct.
The need to go back to the?
We just want to have our architect speak to that. As I mentioned, we want to hold true to the elevation we're showing on our diagrams. We have worked with Historic Zoning, have been through the meetings, obviously, for Design Review Committee and Historic Zoning, have listened to them, and we wish to hold that elevation of 57, which is per our diagrams. But we don't want to be held to that exact, is it 30 inches? Is it 32 inches? Is it 36 inches? That's what we'd like to make sure that we come to agreement on, in working with our architectural team and that design element. But Joe, you have anything else?
Can we pull up that one drawing?
I just want to remind the commission while we're sitting here that you are deliberating now. This isn't a discussion period. So we're at deliberation stage.
That's right. They won't get to speak anymore.
Any comment or discussion on the board of the commission?
Is that something that could be worked out between the applicant and staff? It's going to be set at 2 feet 6 inches.
The conditions, as they read today, condition number 92 specifies that they have to do a survey of the height of Jamison Station at the time of the site plan.
That's how it is.
Condition number 91 states that on top of that, the height can be no different than 2 feet 6 inches. That's the difference that was proposed to the Historic Zoning Commission. So nowhere in the conditions does it say it has to be 57 feet. It just simply says that it has to be 2 feet 6 inches from the height of Jamison Station from parapet to parapet.
That's right. Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay. All right. Any further comments on the part of the commission?
Yes, and I'm not sure how we can get to this. I think back on our, I'm having, okay, wait, maybe. I was having a hard time loading this, but whenever you go back to the attachments on the, it says, 1 through 5 pages of the development plan, I just want to look at the first page on that. Can we get that? Who's doing that? No. No, excuse me, it may be the second, it may be the second page, excuse me, there. Oh, wait, I've got a, try the second one.
I think it's the second page of that package.
Try the second one. Yes.
Yeah, I think that's the way.
Okay, now, if you're looking at that, you can see the boundaries of the plan. You know, if you're looking over on the left, it does have some place where there's some trees and things like that, but please look, and then, but then whenever you go down to below the single-family or duplex and things like that, you see that. Are you telling me that the green stuff on that is 43% open space? I don't think there's any way.
Are you addressing staff on that?
I'm asking them or staff, either one.
Is it appropriate to?
At this point, you guys are deliberating.
We're deliberating. We're beyond that.
If you have questions, you need to see if the chair would want, the applicant should take a seat, and you should be deliberating. If you have questions, you can ask the chair if he, if he, he's willing to let the applicant answer, but public comment is over.
Yeah.
And staff can answer the questions if, to the extent that they can.
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does that look like 43%?
I think we're past that.
I call the question. Let's vote. I call the question. Let's vote.
Okay. So we're back to the main motion, a recommendation of approval to the Board of Mayor and Alderman with staff conditions. By roll-call vote, Commissioner Allen?
No.
Commissioner Harrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
Alderman Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Williamson?
Aye.
And motion passes. Are there any non-agenda items tonight, staff?
There are none.
Any other business? Hearing none, do we have a motion for adjournment? We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Orr.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Allen. By roll-call, Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
Alderman Peterson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Williamson?
Aye.
We're adjourned.